May I just, someone just texted me this a second ago.
Yeah.
Oh, Tim, thank you. I thought it was beautiful, Tim, thanks.
Okay, thank you. Yes, Paul Anthony?
Sorry, what was the name of your company again?
It's H and L, Chantig.
Counsel, I don't have an answer for that. We'll have to look into that. See why.
I know we can do this about a few years in business. I've gone down there and I see that company call back. I hope it's lost. I just want to see if you go up the tender. If I can update it, it's fine, but I think you should be up. I think you should. Go up the tender or share the work. Twenty-two percent, it's only makes it fair. My business and our business, you tell.
Thanks, thank you.
So I'll commit to follow up with the team to find out what's going on there and I'll update counsel on that. Paul, let's.
Sure, thank you. Any more community comments?
With what's going on, Ron, not in check, want to ask, with what's going on with the sewer treatment plant and the lagoon. Part of that building of the sewer treatment plant was supposed to entail the decommissioning of the lagoon. But what's going on? Does this mean the lagoon will not be decommissioned?
The city's worked on a decommissioning plan with StatCheck, the water services board in the province. Currently, there are plans moving forward on decommissioning the wastewater treatment plant this year, the old wastewater treatment plant. In the interim, the lagoon is remaining until there's a future plan for its decommission. So those all have to go through consultation.
And are they getting anywhere with that new plant towards actually working?
Yep, they are making progress on addressing the sludge issue, though the sludge issue is going to take several months to address. So it's not a quick fix. As it's a biological system, they can't offset it quickly. So they have to do draw downs slowly, basically, let it stabilize, draw down, let it stabilize.
So several months, that means that it will be through the summer and will be solved?
I don't have the final timeline on that. I can have to follow up the department. That's something I'm reporting to counsel.
Thanks.
Thank you. Any other community comments, feedback? Thank you. Senator, before we move into the council agenda, I also have regrets from Council, Macmurdo, tonight. He is not able to be in attendance. Next, we're going to move on to the adoption of minutes. Five point one is from the regular council meeting of April the twenty fifth, two thousand twenty-two. Resolution two zero two two zero eight four, moved by council approved, seconded by deputy mayor landmark. Be it resolved that the minutes of the regular council meeting held in council chamber, city hall, Thompson, Manitoba, on Monday, April twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-two, be adopted as circulated to administration. Council, any comments? Open question, all those in favor? Here. Five point two, committee of the whole meeting, May second, two thousand twenty-two. Resolution two zero two two zero eight five, moved by deputy mayor landmark, seconded by council Valentino. Here resolved that the minutes of the committee of the whole meeting held in council chamber, city hall, Thompson, Manitoba, on Monday, May second, be adopted as circulated. Administration. Council. Open the question, all those in favor? Here. Now move into resolutions. Six point one is a motion to lift from the table, resolution number two zero two two zero six nine, resolution to transfer outstanding utility attached. We have already made the motion to raise from the table. Resolution two zero two two zero six nine, moved by council Valentino, seconded by council approved. Whereas municipal act section twenty-five-two states a charge referred to in clause one A may be collected by the municipality in the same manner as a tax may be collected or enforced under this act. And whereas clause one A deals with powers respecting works, services, utilities, and states. Two fifty-two, one municipality exercising powers in the nature of those referred to in clauses two fifty-two, B, C, and E, may set terms and conditions in respect of users, including A, setting the rates of amounts of deposit speeds and other charges and charging them collectively. And whereas the city of Thompson has been unsuccessful in the capture of blackwater, you told the revenue. Now therefore, be it resolved that council approved the transfer of outstanding utility invoices for the following utility accounts contained in the attached. Administration.
Yeah, this is a yearly business function of the administration to collect council's outstanding debts with respect to the utility. But the administration requests that council pass this resolution so that the proper billing can be achieved.
Council Valentino, that's a mover?
Thank you, ma'am. I was the original mover to this, I think you both said. And I still support it. I know we've had discussions as council since then, talking about doing one offs with people. If they want to come forward, different arrangements, we discussed all of that. So I will be supporting this to move it so that it can get attached to taxes if it does help with deals down in bills. Thank you.
Thank you.
I also forgot to mention that my previous meetings, council expressed concerns that names of people who had concerns about their own bills, that they were being dealt with properly, that their names would be removed. A call went out to council to submit names. Names were received and confirmed that those people were not on the list. So at this time, anyone outstanding has not approached the city to have their account dealt with separately. That's why the administration is recommending moving forward with the names that are contained here.
Any other counselors, comments?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Was any other means of communication used to see if there were other potential healers?
I'd have to defer to our CFO on the process of.
Yes, everyone, this is given a letter, sending some letters out to all the people that are on this, the tenants and landlords, all the listeners that are to.
Through the chair, can I have CFO clarify whether or not people were asked specifically, could we, if they had issues with their bill? Because it sounds to me like they were given the opportunity to pay and that's. Agents for payment.
Yes, it was just to make.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Certainly, we have, as Council Valentino mentioned, spoke to this issue a number of times. I will tell you that when the request went out to submit names, I did ones that certainly contacted myself personally. I will tell you that the city manager required that they were not on the list the ones that submitted. I personally can't not support a resolution once the information that I had requested was given back to me. I now have to trust the process that we have done our due diligence and made sure that those that we were dealing with. They were talking to us about their issue, their problem, didn't know they paid or didn't have to pay. I've got to trust the system at this point till I cannot, that we've done that. So I will support the resolution because certainly the names again that I put forward on behalf of the taxpayers of Thompson was certainly got back to me myself personally and dealt with. So thank you, city manager, for that.
Yeah, just thanks again for doing that work. I think it's really important to have people that were in debates or negotiations to not be on that list. Thanks to the administration.
Thank you. Counsel Walsh.
Madam Mayor, my concern is not much about this transfer to tax. My concern is about the system that we created as a council that allow, which is under the law, that they allow to do this. So from that part, the perspective, I have no problem to support this transferring. But I do do concern about the system alone. It's a lot of loophole, a lot of problem. And we also learn from the trip that came from, came back from, right? A lot of numbers inflated. So I hope, I hope, I really hope and wish all of us collectively do some, some more due diligence, which is look into the system deeply to make sure that the taxpayer and the rate payer is paying according to what it need, not inflated one. So with that, I think that I always want to support when it's by law in place. So I wrote no other objection for that part of it. So moving forward, I think we should look into the system more. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Counsel Paul?
Yeah, I'll just comment that I can't support this matter, Mayor, knowing that we've got a number of issues with the system. I feel it's very important that people pay their utility bills. Absolutely no argument for me there. But it's quite apparent that, first of all, that we do have problems. Second, that we haven't really communicated the fact that there's the ability to, quote unquote, appeal. And this council certainly by vote expressed interest in following up and having the administration set up an appeals process. But I haven't heard anything about that since, so with respect to that, I can't support this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I would like to make a request tonight that we would look no more than a month away from this meeting, possibly at a committee of the old start with to review this process, not wait till there's actually going to be added to tax. One month from this meeting, committee of the old, to review the process, to see if there's things we can tighten in that process so that we're not faced with that in another year. Because there's nothing any worse than, you know, you've got a month or two before the deadline and we're adding taxes and we come with some issues. I would hope that together, all of us, can look at the process, bring forward our concerns. And then at that point, once we've done that, put a timeframe so that we're not waiting for months at hand for answers to be. And I'm not suggesting that we are now. I'm saying we need to fix it. If there's a problem with it, we need to fix it. So my recommendation is one month from tonight or wherever the committee of goal is that we put it on the agenda, the committee of goal for review. Thank you.
So council had tasked me to meet with a member of landlords who had issues with the process. I've been meeting with them biweekly. My last meeting with them was last week of preparing a report for council on what findings came from the meetings and recommendations from them. Though they requested to meet with me one more time next week to review what I put together as a report to ensure that accurately reflects their ratings and their recommendations. So that is coming forth for council to meet.
Sound good, Counsel Alford? Okay, open the question, all those in favor? Okay, opposed? Here. Six point two is a resolution. Resolution to approve the transfer to of utility to taxes. It has to say, yeah.
Going through that process.
I was going to say. Okay, six point three is a resolution to approve an assistant senior election official. Resolution two zero two two zero eight six, moved by deputy mayor landmark, seconded by council Valentino. Here resolved that council appoint eight as assistant senior election official. Administration?
Our senior election official has requested the council appoint an assistant to assist her at the municipal election in October twenty twenty-six. The reason being that our SEO is very well versed to how regular elections are started and run, but has never run an election with electronic or bull counting machines. She's requested that council consider appointing Mr. Turp as her assistant so that he can assist her with the role of the electronic board for this year's election.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Lamar?
Yeah, Mr. Turp was our SEO for the last couple of elections. Pretty stressful. Well, I'm curious, who usually has an assistant SEO?
Understanding in the past, there's been clerks who've assisted or a combination of other assists. So this is SEO's specific request, counsel.
In any case, I have a favor of this, and support to make sure.
Thank you. Counsel Colber?
What is the cost of this assistant to our budget?
I believe that the request is at about a maximum of a hundred and thirty hours to the election process at the previous rates. So be whatever the previous rates of council approved would be calculated out how many hours are actually used. And so I wouldn't have the total of that of a cost now.
Anyone else?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I guess the question is, we really have nobody else at this point. So we've hired someone to oversee the election. And what I'm reading in the memo is they don't have the skill set because they've never done it properly to be able to do it. So you want to have to ask themselves, there's certainly a extra cost as alluded to by Counsel Colber. But if we don't do it, and then it becomes a big problem, we could be into buy elections that we don't want to be in for either. So you're kind of, if you don't, or I'm concerned with the costs. We're always talking about costs. But I'm also concerned with the fact that if we could set ourselves up for failure, if we don't have the resources in place to be able to do it. So that is a concern for me.
Madam Mayor, my recollection serves me when Ms. Hewitt was being appointed. I objected based on the fact that there wasn't advertisement to the community. Unless I missed it, was there any attempt to, or has there been or will there be any attempt to post this out to the community prior to?
This is all overseen by the senior election official, so I don't advertise on senior election official's behalf. We can advertise if they're requested. I'm not sure the process that was used for her selection.
Let's be consistent with what I had done last time. I will support that appointment, but that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? I do, when I read into it is that there would definitely be a person assisting anyway, so there would definitely be hours involved. It just happens that this person is knowledgeable in the voting system. While it may cost us a bit more, I don't think there's a total cost of this position because we would already have people doing it, assisting her.
I don't have a problem with hiring another person to help this director, but the only question I kind of struggle with, he was an SEO for, and retired or resigned. So now we hire him back to become assistant. So that part, I really don't get it. He could have just continued running it without interference. So because of, he resigned, so we have to employ a new person. Now it costs us more money. That's what I, how I look at, under the money perspective. So with that, I cannot support this at this moment. Thank you.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. I guess my question, I should have asked it when I spoke first, I guess. It's probably an additional cost because of an higher rate to be assistant, but will it require, will be an extra person or can that be within that? So instead of a clerk, they move up to the assistant, but we don't have an, you understand what I'm saying? We don't have an additional clerk.
That's my understanding is that every year council does budget, part of that would cover the cost of the clerk. So instead, the SEO is requesting for assistance. Council, we still have to bring forward what any of those rates would be, and that's still a council discretion.
Any more questions or open the questions? All those in favor? Opposed? Defeated? Six points four is a resolution to appoint tax service Inc. as tax sale manager. Resolution two zero two two zero eight seven, moved by council Alford, seconded by council Valentino. Whereas resolution two zero two two zero eight zero approved twenty twenty-one is the tax sale year. Now therefore, be it resolved that pursuant to bylaw number eighteen thirty-four twenty-ten of the city of Thompson, tax servicing, be appointed to conduct tax sales for the city of Thompson. And be it further resolved that pursuant to bylaw number eighteen thirty-four dash twenty-ten of the city of Thompson, Donna Zinku, general manager of Tax Service Inc., be appointed as tax sale manager for the city of Thompson, administration. Oh, pardon?
Okay. So taxes and performing tax sales for the city of Thompson for a number of years. There's a number of steps that need to be taken to promote tax sale, which you don't have the resources to do in council. There's no process to be at the service. It's all borne by the, the province that they're in.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm a little confused, so I would expect someone will help me with my confusion. I might be tired, but it says in the memo that there is no cost to the city. It's borne by the properties. Am I reading that right?
Yes, that's correct.
So basically, what I get and I guess is that we have to still pass the resolution even though there's no cost. But I would thought there would have been an administrative piece rather than, there's no money involved. Why are we, why are we even debating it? Why is there risk? And it's just a question because I don't know.
My understanding is a corporate bylaw, right?
Yes. Any other questions? Uncle Paul?
So if I read this correctly, in the past, you had a pretty high number of properties with only one tenth of them selling. Am I reading that correctly?
Yes, so there starts off with a large number, but before it actually goes to tax sale, most people come in and pay.
Ah, so it's the sale is because they come in.
Yes, so they'll end up on the list because they're in arrears. But over time, they're given notice by the tax service people, they come and make payments until the absolute deadline of the tax sale. So as it notes here, there were eighty-two that started in this process last time, and the day of tax sale, there was only eight left.
I remember, Madam Mayor, I had proposed a similar resolution before council. I've been educated on this issue. I will support this one.
Thank you.
Thank you. I wanted to comment on their CAO, just that you said there was eight, so there was four or two months old.
There was eight that went into the tax sale process.
Yeah.
Then through tax sales and the auction, six were paid or purchased through the sale and two were inherited by the city.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Open the question, all those in favor? Here. Six point five is resolution to approve the tabulation of prices for the purchase of uniforms to the fire department. Resolution two zero two two zero eight eight, moved by council Walsh, seconded by deputy mayor landmark. Here resolved that council approved the recommendations of the purchasing agent and award the tender for the purchase uniforms to the fire department, the urban capital for their current prices seventeen thousand nine hundred and thirty-four dollars plus applicable taxes as per tender file number ten twenty-two.
It's stuff in the city's Thompson Fire and Emergency Services are required to issue wear uniforms that are issued by the city. And that's covered under the collective bargaining agreements, as there's a large number of uniforms that have to be purchased every year. A bid was put out for our T and four tenders received. The department has done the analysis, provided a recommendation, and that's what the department is recommending that council pass this evening.
Thank you. Counsel Walsh?
Nothing much to add. This is, uh, is as required when needed, so that now it's not what we're spending right now, so.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It's interesting to see. I certainly support it. I'm glad that we're there to select the bright and bridge. So kind of heard about the sports up there, there's no one to do. Absolutely, they look good in their uniforms, so I will support it.
Any other comments? Same now? Open the question, all those in favor? Here. Six point six is a resolution to approve the tabulation of prices for the folder insert. Resolution two zero two two zero eight nine, moved by council Alford, seconded by council approved. Here resolved that council approved the recommendation of the purchasing agent and award the lease to the folder insert to mill office systems for the total three-year lease price of thirteen thousand nine hundred and fifty-three dollars ninety-six cents plus applicable taxes as pretender file number one oh seven two two. Administration?
So the city released the folder inserted to send out all the billings for the taxes, but then one utility, the evidence, and forty-six thousand office center each year. This machine just folds those, folds all of those papers and supplements the input for us, and see a lot of hard buyer staff. The current one expires this tender, or certainly aren't, there's two responses and then recommendations to work from those responses. And that was that, and this is not the computer budgets.
Counsel Alford?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm the one that appreciates a system like this. I've been familiar with it in my previous life where we didn't have one. And you had one. And I will tell you, it will pay for itself in no time. We need to add a system like that. Instead of adding four people, I'll use as an example, you've got two. I would like to see though, in the future, that if we can, the more we can send out electronically, the better off we would be. We need to move to that age. It's going to be three years, I understand that, and the cost of it. But I would hope during those three years, as much as we can set up with some of the newer systems that we're getting into, it should be working towards that. But certainly, these things are really worthwhile to have when you have that many documents to look after. So thank you.
Any other comments? Counsel Colber?
So, or she has always said that the cuts, the cut down on labor. So there's more cut down on labor, right? We should cut some jobs.
Pardon?
Right? Well, there's more cut down on labor, you said. How much labor is there to do in this job? Do I get that answer?
Okay. We've had it some place for a number of years, that's been about twenty-eleven. I'm surprised to that, to be able to take a couple of weeks to hold up four thousand and fifty-six and about, but we have it in place for the election for staff to launch the labor.
So it's also not, it's not that the people there, that's their sole job. They have other jobs that they do. When it comes time for bills to draw, if they do manually, they'd likely be working overtime or just specifically unfolding folders. But they have other jobs under the collective bargaining units that actually occupy most of the time. So this is just a machine that then means that people don't have to be taking away from their regular jobs instead of focusing on this, and we're not incurring a burden.
That's okay.
Anybody else? Open for the question, all those in favor? Six point seven is a resolution to approve the sole source for the purchase of DeNora make panel. Resolution two zero two two zero nine zero, moved by council Alford, seconded by deputy mayor landmark. Here is all that council approved the sole source with SCG process for the purchase of a DeNora make panel for the chlorine feeder installed at the water treatment plant for a cost of sixteen thousand two dollars fifty-six cents. All taxes and no debris included, administration.
This is a request from the utility through the public works department. They've gone up for a quote for this part or for shopping to get other, other quotes. Turns out that there's really only a sole provider as it's a proprietary technology. You can only buy it from this one company, so it requires a sole source to purchase. It's a critical piece of equipment that oversees the chlorine system at the wastewater treatment plant. And when I spoke with the director there, the last time that this. And when I spoke with the director there, the last time that this has been replaced, nineteen ninety-five, it's showing its age. So it's vital that we replace this before it actually fails and can't be repaired.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Certainly knowing the water treatment plant, and certainly a rescue guy when it comes to chlorine and things like that, certainly it is important piece of equipment. I guess my big concern is we have taken on another, a number of the assets of what was owned by a previous D A slash equal equal slash valet. And this is what you're going to expect with those big assets. This is what you're going to expect of a breakdown. They're going to start replacing the equipment. This is probably a cheap piece of equipment compared to what they're going to replace over the years. And I would have hoped that that's nineteen ninety-five. So you're talking twenty-seven years now, that piece of equipment there. I'm not sure when we took it over, if whoever looked at that asset and said, you know, we should replace this, we should replace that because it's going to break down or not. But it really concerns me that we took over a system, you know, twenty-seven years now. I'm not sure how long we've had the water treatment plant. I think it's only three or four years. Am I correct?
I believe it was taken over around twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen.
So you had equipment that's over twenty years old, which is bound to break down. It's not as corrosive as some other places I've worked in, but certainly well supported as you need it. There's no doubt about it. But I'm going to tell you, when some of those big bills and that plan took pictures on a tour starts to break down, now you're talking seventy, eighty thousand dollars for some of them. They're not, they're not cheap. So I'm a little concerned about what we've been left to deal with. So some of those grants that we get from valet, maybe they ought to be a lot bigger for what we're going to face in the future. Thank you.
Payment for this, does this come in the utility user? Operating budget and utility?
Yeah, so it's technically just regular operating. This would just be maintenance. If we were able to get other quotes, this probably wouldn't have to come to council because it's a sole source. It had to come to council.
Yeah, please indulge me. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Please indulge me for walking a little away from the subject. City of Thompson is going to be implementing an asset management program or system. I believe we haven't set that up for the water treatment plant system yet. Is that correct?
No, the water treatment plant has its current own internal maintenance system, but it hasn't been integrated as an asset manager. We're just doing our kickoff meetings with the asset manager system.
Just wondering what the chance that this, this has been identified as a critical component for a spare has been identified.
That I couldn't answer. I could, I could check the department if this is something that should have a spare. I don't know if it's a small unit or if it's a massive panel. I actually don't know.
Anyone else? Open the question. All those in favor? We're now going to move into bylaws. The first reading of bylaw two zero two five, two zero two two zoning by law amendment. Resolution two zero two two zero nine one, moved by Councilor Wong, seconded by Councilor Ellsworth. Here resolve the bylaw two zero two five two zero two two being a bylaw of the city of Thompson to amend the city of Thompson zoning by law eighteen ninety-one dash twenty twelve as amended to add commercial school as a conditional use in the C M U zone which shall adhere to the established both requirements introduced and read a first time.
So council is considering selling a piece of land through an auction to purchase at the moment for the development of a school training for security services on Thompson Drive. So the law is currently forced it down development. And it's in the commercial mixed use zone. Unfortunately, this zone does not currently allow commercial schools. And we have to add that as a condition of that zone. It happens to be added in all the other curricular zones. But for whatever reason, zoning by law was developed, it wasn't included in the curriculars. So this was reviewed at the last committee of the old with a recommendation for that this be approved through first reading for consideration of a many zoning by law to allow a commercial school. That's all.
Not much to that. Just to, I'd like to say someone who's invested in Thompson. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Again, I concur with Councilon, that it's a good investment. We're seeing investment. I guess the only thing is we miss these things, which then kind of holds up the process to get them moving. And as we all know, construction time in Thompson is not a long season. And you could run into problems real quick if you were to slow down. So I'm hoping that the next meeting council, I mean, hopefully like the second and third and get over with. And certainly I will support it. Thank you.
Yeah, just to note that it wasn't missed, like currently was missed back in twenty twelve when we wrote that zoning by law. It's been identified and done. We tend to bring it forward in fast track. So it's not a local development.
And seven point two, our third reading of the bylaws of wastewater has been moved from the agenda. It should be put on the next one. We'll be discussing it on Friday. So I just want to mention that this is Nurses Week. So let's all go out and show our appreciation. It's been a long haul through this pandemic. A lot of yous have had, you know, family that works in industry there and you got the caring that's required. So thank you even to the support of all the families with the nurses of your university. And finally, we just had Minister Colin and Minister Howard up here today. We did get our announcement for our ISIP from the pool, fifteen million dollar grant Manitoba Mining Development Fund announced numerous projects around the province that they have contributed to. They're all listed online. The Y received forty-two thousand dollars for their HVAC system, which is definitely a bonus to them. We also received three hundred thousand dollars for Jilla Park for enhancements over there. And there was a hundred and fifty thousand, hundred and fifty-four thousand roadwork within our municipality that is coming to us over the run of what we would have bought for our basketball funding. So definitely good news for our city. And thank you to everybody that was able to participate. With that, Councilor Ellsworth?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just very quickly, I tried to listen to those announcements while I was traveling with my lovely wife today back from our forty-nine anniversary occasion. And I couldn't hear it very well. And I've addressed that with the city manager in regards to the microphones. It's too bad that when there's announcements like that, you can't hear it. That's good. But I certainly would have been there if I had have been in town. So thank you.
Thank you. Well, thank you. It's been a great day. So we'll call for adjournment. Councilor Valentino, Deputy Mayor Lomar, all in favor?